There we go.
All right, uh, we good? Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'd like to call the order of this Independent School District 624. Uh, would the clerk please call the roll?
Thompson. Absent, Arcan.
Here.
Beloit. Absent Chapman.
Here.
Ellison here, Mullen.
Here.
Newmaster.
Here.
All right, uh, although it's kind of weird, uh, doing it over video chat, I think it's important that we, uh, stand and recognize the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you would all please do so, I would appreciate it. Thank you. Wayne, do you want to lead us off?
Sure, hi, Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you all. I appreciate, uh, the technology piece in that and, uh, appreciate your effort there. Uh, before we get into the, uh, asking, uh, talking about the agenda, uh, Dr. Kazmicek has a statement to read, so I would turn it over to him to read the statement.
All right, thank you Chair Mullen. So due to the current federal and state emergency declarations and guidance about limiting person-to-person contact due to the COVID-19 pandemic, this meeting of the White Bear Lake Area School District School Board is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota statutes, uh, thirteen D point zero two one, meetings by telephone or other electronic means. Due to the health pandemic, the school board determined that it is not feasible for the school board members to be physically present at the regular meeting location, and that it is not feasible for the public to attend this meeting at the regular meeting location due to the health pandemic. Persons may view the meeting on our website, ISD six two four dot org. School board members are reminded to mute their microphone when they are not speaking. School board members wishing to speak should use the chat feature and then wait to be recognized by, uh, Chair Mullen. The Chair will determine the order in which board members wishing to speak will be recognized. When recognized, the board members should unmute the microphone, speak, and then mute their device. All votes will be conducted by roll call. Each school board member should wait until their name is called before voting. This meeting is being recorded. Access to the recording will be made available on the just school district's, uh, website as soon as is reasonably possible. That's it.
Thank you very much. I would also like to, just because it's electronic, I'd like to, I'd like the clerk to please note that Angela Thompson is now, uh, in the, in the meeting.
Noted.
Thank you. And, uh, now we will move in. Uh, we have before us an agenda for tonight's meeting. I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Chapman. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Dr. Arcan. Thank you. Uh, with that, uh, this will require a roll call. Would ask the clerk, clerk to please call the roll.
Thompson.
Hi.
Arcan.
Hi.
Beloit. Chapman.
Hi.
Ellison, hi, Mullen.
Hi.
Newmaster.
Hi.
All right, we have before us an agenda. We also have before us a consent agenda, and these are our sundry items, uh, that typically take place, uh, during our board meeting. Um, the one thing that I continue to bring up because it's so important to our school district is the generosity of our community, and this month, uh, is no different from not only the generous donations to our student body, but also to the senior center, and I would just like to thank everyone for their generosity, and thank them for their continued support of the school district. Uh, with that, I would ask for a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved. So moved.
A motion by Ms. Ellison, was that you?
Yes.
And then a second by Dr. Newmaster?
Yes.
Okay, uh, any other, uh, this will also require a roll call vote. Would the clerk, clerk please call the roll?
Thompson.
Hi.
Arcan.
Hi.
Chapman.
Hi.
Ellison, hi, Mullen.
Hi, sorry.
Newmaster.
Hi.
All right, the motion, uh, then passes and we have before us a consent agenda. Thank you all. I know the technology is a little bit, uh, uh, fussy sometimes, so I appreciate your patience. Uh, we are now at the portion of the meeting, uh, which is our public forum during the time the school board is, uh, meeting by electronic, uh, means. Those who would like to provide comments during the public forum may submit their comments using the White Bear Lake Area Schools Public Forum Comments Form. Um, Dr. Kazmicek, do we have any of those that have been submitted for tonight's meeting?
Yes, we have one and, um, are you, yep, you are?
Yep.
Yes, sure. Would you please read it?
Sure, um, we have, um, have one community member who is submitted, um, by the name of, I believe, Kara Peterson, K E R A, A, at the address of three five three West Seventh Street, Suite two oh one in St. Paul, phone number six five one two 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 three seven eight seven. Um, and the message is, dear White Bear Lake Area School Board members, as President of the St. Paul Regional Labor Federation, I wanted to write and express appreciation to the White Bear Lake Area School Board for the action taken during its May eleventh, two thousand twenty meeting to approve the use of prevailing wage on construction projects funded by the two thousand nineteen bond referendum, and to expressly state that the use of prevailing wage on construction projects will continue to be the school district's practice on projects that are associated with the bond referendum. I also wanted to, wanted you to know that I have heard from many community members and leaders about the school board's vote on a failed motion that would have allowed for a thirty-day public comment period related to the use of a project labor agreement, as well as the motion that explicitly stated that the school district would not enter into a project labor agreement for bond referendum projects. Community members expressed that they felt the school board's process was not transparent and that they were shut out in this process even though they live in the district, have children in the schools, and were active in helping to pass the referendum. I share these concerns as my efforts to connect with school board members and with Dr. Kazmicek via phone and email to discuss the use of a project labor agreement were left unanswered. More than six thousand union members and householders of unions affiliated with the St. Paul Labor, sorry, St. Paul Regional Labor Federation live in the White Bear Lake Area School District. I'm writing on their behalf to request that the White Bear Lake Area School Board establish a prevailing wage policy with strong enforcement mechanisms, and that the school board monitor district administration's enforcement efforts to ensure that the prevailing wage policy is applied in a fair and equitable manner. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Betty. Is there any other, uh, public comments? Okay, seeing our hearing none, uh, we will move into our first informational item, C one, which is the update on the summer programming. Uh, Dr. K, is this you?
I will turn it over to Mr. Mauer. Are you, are you going to kick it, kick it off?
Yep, I am.
Okay, great.
So yeah, good evening Chair, uh, Mullen, members of the board, Dr. Kazmicek, and, uh, fellow people in attendance at the meeting on this warm balmy Monday evening, but, uh, yeah, just looking to forward to providing an update, um, for everyone on what's gonna, what's gonna be happening this summer. I have a brief overview of, uh, things related within community services and recreation around some adult and youth activities and how things are going to look a little different this summer, um, and then some, uh, some current data that we have on some numbers, and then I also have Brian Peliquin here to provide an update on, uh, some summer high school activities going on, and then Seth Salinger, who is overseeing our, um, high school, uh, summer school and credit recovery program is here to provide a brief update on that as well. So I'm gonna jump in and kick it off, uh, right away in the area of, uh, community services and rec, and, um, so what's happening this summer for youth, uh, for an overview within our early childhood department are getting ready for kindergarten programs that we offer for our preschool students that'll be going into kindergarten have been pushed back. Um, we were gonna start some in June, and then in July, we've pushed everything back until July. Um, those sections will start then. It gives those students an opportunity for them to participate in some programming, uh, for a week at the school that they will be attending for, for kindergarten, gives them time to meet their principal, uh, be, get comfortable with the building and their, and their upcoming surroundings for kindergarten. Uh, our summer extended day and flex, uh, school age care programs, uh, will be taking place as well, and I'll provide a little bit more detail about how that's gonna look differently a little bit this summer, uh, a little bit later on. Our youth enrichment programs will run. Um, we will continue some virtual program offerings as well as some take-home kits. We've had uh, projects and, and things through vendors that kids and families can sign up for to take home, um, and pick up, and then gives them an opportunity to do a project at home with their parents or something, uh, to explore their interests in, in those take-home kits. Our driver's ed program continues, um, and we will also be having some in-person, uh, robotics and arts enrichment as we have in the past, and those will all take place in one location this summer, uh, over at Otter Lake Elementary. As far as summer sports camps go, um, currently, we are starting, uh, next week, um, on the fifteenth, the week of the fifteenth, we will be operating a outdoor, uh, tennis camp at North Campus. Our boys and girls basketball camps at, uh, North and South Campus will run, however, they will be modified to fit those, the guidelines and uh, new standards that I'll talk about briefly on the next slide, uh, as well as our, uh, volleyball camp at Sunrise Middle School will start next week as well. Uh, our summer U program, which is our summer school program for our elementary and middle school students, uh, will run. Um, we've been given new guidance, um, before the school year ended that provide, uh, and approved or, uh, provided and, and approved in-person and distance learning models. As you are all very well aware, we ended the school year with the distance learning model, um, and we're giving, um, approval with guidance and how to operate that in person as well. Um, we are taking a, a little bit of a breather on that and gonna push things back a little bit this summer. So we have a planning team that's been working on this as we've been receiving new guidance from the state about how this can look, and we will re, be reconvening here in the next couple of weeks, uh, to determine our best approach as a district to offer opportunities for, um, continued, uh, learning for students over the summer, and those programs will likely be offered starting in late July and then end in early August, giving students an experience to, um, uh, participate in those opportunities for, uh, continued learning over the summer while also giving them another continued break before we start up school again, uh, later in the fall. As far as, uh, opportunities for adults, our, uh, adult enrichment program will continue to offer online enrichment opportunities. Uh, we've been exploring and offering those, um, since the pandemic happened, um, and we will continue to offer online only. Right now, we do not have set plans to bring adults back in the buildings at this time for classes. So we've, uh, um, been offering any opportunities that we can with our vendors and, and teachers for, uh, online enrichment opportunities for our interested adult population. Our senior programming, um, our senior center officially is still closed, um, to the public. We are unable to offer programs through there at this time, uh, like we normally have, uh, over the summer, um, months. Our Meals on Wheels program continues. Um, since the pandemic hit, uh, hard in mid-March, we have actually taken on an additional hundred and twenty new, uh, what, what Metro Meals on Wheels and Meals on Wheels are calling as, uh, our COVID clients are people that may have been experiencing more difficulty uh, obtaining food and maybe be experiencing a little more vulnerability in that area. Uh, we've taken on a hundred new, a hundred and twenty new people since then. So it's been a great service. We've been able to, uh, provide, uh, a huge thank you to those operating the, uh, Meals on Wheels program as well as the Senior Center, and a huge thank you to all of our volunteer drivers that we have from the community that come in to help provide these meals to our families. Uh, and we also are looking to offer continued virtual connections to our seniors. Um, another update that came in, uh, too late to put on the slide, um, we're also working to offer our, um, senior foot care opportunities for those that need it. Um, we've come to find that it is a particularly, uh, 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 important health need that we are able to provide, and it's, it's been very difficult for them to find those services any, uh, anywhere else outside of the Senior Center. Um, and we've, are working diligently with a new vendor to come in to follow the, uh, new guidelines in place, and we look to start offering that again, uh, uh, in person at set times, uh, starting next week as well. Um, our adult basic education program continues. We've transitioned into a distance learning model for our adult learners as well. Uh, that model of distance learning will remain to stay in place throughout the summer. Um, we have been also given permission to run a hybrid model, uh, to offer in-person classes, and we do hope to, uh, continue to explore that and hope to bring our adult students back into classrooms when we're able to, uh, hopefully later this summer sometime in July or early August. Uh, it's fine. And then just an update around, uh, facility use. So right now, uh, starting June one, we did begin to take outdoor reservations for facility use for those, uh, groups or organizations that were able to provide, uh, uh, an MDH, uh, summer programming, um, return to play plan, which we've been asked to provide and have set for all of our programs. So we're, we asked this of our outside renters as well, and I'll, uh, dive into a little bit more about what that looks like on the next slide. Um, currently, we do not have any set date, uh, to allow for, um, in, uh, indoor facility rentals, uh, but we continue to monitor that, and then, um, we'll determine, um, when's the best day to do so, uh, as we navigate through the summer. And so just to, what, how things will look a little different this summer, um, what people can expect to see in all of our programs is that all of our programs have been adapted to meet the new Minnesota Department of Health's social distancing guidelines. Uh, what that means, um, is that when people enter into our buildings, they will expect to, uh, undergo a daily health screening procedure and check-in process upon entering our buildings or attending our outdoor camps and programming. Uh, what that looks like is they'll have a specific entry and exit, uh, for all of our programs and all of our buildings, um, and, and specific procedures for drop-off and pickup, um, which could be screening and asking, uh, parents of kids and other kids joining the high school programs. There's a series of questions that MDH asks us to, um, uh, ask them to confirm, uh, before they enter the, before they enter the program or classroom. Uh, and this also will help with our, uh, contact tracing protocols. If, if somebody were to, uh, become sick, uh, in our programs or get, uh, a confirmed case of COVID uh, nineteen, then we will be able to track that, um, who they were, um, in contact with in their groups. Our group sizes for all of our summer programs will be limited to a one to nine ratio. Um, so all of our, uh, summer camps and like basketball camps will be a one to nine. We can have up to nine students and a coach on one basketball court, um, on each half. Uh, same for volleyball. Our outdoor guidance was the same, however, our, uh, the recent update from the state on Friday showed us that our, our, um, they shared with us that our outdoor, um, uh, sports camps, um, or anything outdoor can be increased up to twenty-five people. Um, so that was a nice, um, update for us as we look to continue things over the summer. Um, as far as our extended day program, so what's that, what's, how that, how that looks a little bit different with our one to nine ratio is that, um, students historically have been given the, uh, what we call like student voice and choice. Students have a lot of options throughout their day and extended day and flex to, to explore whatever interest they want to see, uh, different activities going on, different options for them to choose, and so they would be with a bunch of different teachers throughout the day, providing different enrichment activities or, um, different, uh, activities outside. What this looks like this year for this summer is that if I were a, um, class lead or a, um, extended day supervisor or, um, aide or assistant is that I would have a group of nine students, and those nine students would be with me all summer. We would have one classroom, all of our activities and, um, would, uh, would be in that classroom just to limit, um, the, uh, exposure to kids throughout the day. So not, not the most ideal, uh, program like we're used to running it, but, uh, given the guidelines that are in place, uh, we're very confident that, uh, we're able to offer a quality program for kids to participate, and we have a safe space for them to do so. Um, and what that looks like too during the day is that we have staggered space transition times, meaning that if students are going down for lunch, not everybody's going down at once. Um, students will be released at specific times, so they're the only ones in the hallway, and again, limiting that interaction uh, with other students in the program, uh, uh, for their safety and health, uh, throughout the day, uh, regular hand washing, um, uh, uh, throughout the day, and then updated cleaning and sanitizing procedures in our buildings as well. Um, our extended day and flex sites, uh, yeah, traditionally in the summer, we would offer three, uh, three extended day sites and one middle school site. Um, due to our ratios and the number of students we have in our programs, um, how that looks this year, and you can see in the slides there, is that, uh, we'll have five sites, and our flex sites will be combined, uh, with our, um, extended day sites in one location. So we will try to make sure that, uh, students or our families that have students both at elementary and middle school will be in one building, uh, for their programming. So, um, you can read the, the grades options, uh, through there on that slide. Um, the next slide of participation data, it's not exactly apples to apples, given that the numbers of from two thousand nineteen are, uh, year-end, and we are in the very beginning parts of the summer, obviously, for this year, but it does, the, uh, extended days, uh, numbers kind of do speak for themselves in terms of how, uh, COVID nineteen will, will likely affect us this summer. Um, we continue to accept contracts throughout the summer as, as we are able to, given staff and ratios. Uh, but you can see is where we ended last year with, uh, four hundred and seventy-four contracts in extended day and a hundred and fifty-nine in flex. Uh, currently, we are at, uh, just, just under three hundred and fifty contracts for extended day and, uh, just over fifty contracts for flex. We had, uh, from our, the time when our extended day registration began to now, uh, we have had two hundred and forty-three participants withdraw due to COVID-related reasons, and that could be a number of things, um, uh, just parents not comfortable bringing their kids into programming yet. Uh, we've had a number of calls of parents that unfortunately have been furloughed from their positions and just are in need of the care this summer. Um, so a lot of reasons due to that, and if, as things, um, you know, as the dial slowly changes, uh, in the direction we'd like to see it go, we hope to have those numbers go up and, and provide that service to those families that are in need. Uh, and again, the youth enrichment and summer camp participation, obviously, our numbers are lower, but we're in the early parts of the summer, but we do expect our numbers to be lower, um, this summer, given everything going on. There are some camps, uh, wrestling camp, cheer camp, um, those camps that are more, uh, more difficult to socially distance and offer, um, um, that kind of safety, we have chosen to cancel. And one thing, oh, I forgot to note on the summer camps is that all of our sports camps are contactless, uh, per the guidance, so, um, the, uh, participants in our camps are expected to be socially distanced. Uh, the programming involved will be a lot of skills and drills. Uh, we are not allowed to play games or have competitions at this point, um, uh, but, uh, for, uh, sorry, for, yeah, not expected to have games until later this summer, um, when they move into that mid or medium or high-risk sports as they transition for the summer. Um, and then I'll, uh, hand it off to Mr. Peliquin here for an update around some summer high school opportunities.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mauer. Uh, good evening Chair Mullen, School Board, Dr. Kazmicek and Cabinet. Thanks for having me tonight, uh, to talk just a little bit about high school activities in the summer. Uh, I would like to begin by just simply stating that my office and, and Tim Mauer's office have, have worked hand in hand over the last couple of months, just making sure that we are on the same page and we are following the MDH and the CDC guidelines regarding our activities. They are ever-changing. Uh, we've been hit with several curveballs, including a couple that Tim has already spoken about regarding, uh, a positive one and an increase in our outdoor capacity. Uh, there's another curveball that I'm gonna talk about regarding pools here on the, on my next slide. Uh, to not be completely redundant, please know that all of those restrictions and all of those, those guidelines that are in place for Tim's programming do hold through all the way through the high school. And so if you look on my slide, the two main things that I'm working with are summer practices and summer strength and conditioning. Many of our programs who run youth camps always run them through community ed, and so that works under Tim's rather than mine. I'm talking specifically our high school coaches working with our high school student athletes. So there are the, those are the two main things, uh, that are under my umbrella this summer that I'm working on. Uh, programming starts just like Tim's, uh, next Monday, and, and we kind of base that off of the State High School League Summer Waiver for our head coaches got pushed back to help with planning to the fifteenth. So all of those things are starting up next Monday. Uh, we are gonna have consistent protocols, like I said, with community ed. Our forms are very similar. Our waivers are very similar. Just simply some name, name changes, and I appreciate community ed for all their work on those, on those forms. Tim and his staff did an amazing job getting those things together and making sure that we were working together in lockstep in our communication. From a summer practices standpoint, our coaches are working with their current athletes. They will be following the MDH and the CDC guidelines. Our practices are contactless, so they're all individual drills. Uh, you'll see on, on the few next slide that there are several sports that by the very nature of their sport can't be practicing at all this summer. We're hoping maybe down the road in late summer we'll get to it, and also currently, um, all youth organizations, MDH and CDC are limiting to no games. So there are no contests, no leagues running this summer. Uh, as far as summer strength and conditioning is concerned, we have a third-party ETS who runs that for us. They run it year-round. Um, they're a growing organization that is owned by Ryan Engelbert, who is a local guy, um, and also Adam Thielen is co-owner of it. They've been working with us, uh, for a year now. They have several locations throughout the metro and work with almost twenty high schools in the metro now on their strength and conditioning. Because they are their own gym and they run our program, uh, I have allowed them to just implement and utilize their protocols and their guidelines, and because they are a private gym, much like Lifetime, much like the YMCA and those other private gyms, that they are following much stricter guidelines than we even are dealing with, and so I'm confident with what I've experienced and what I've seen from them that they are going to do great things. We currently have more kids signed up at this point for summer training this summer than we did last summer, which is approximately two hundred kids that we will be starting on the turf with because we will not be starting in our weight room, um, due to COVID and just making sure that, that we're trying to follow the guidelines as much as we can. So we're staying away from the weight room to start with, hoping that we can get there at some point, and so we will be spending our days out on the turf, uh, and we will be getting creative in spaces in the building, on bad weather days. And so if you look at, uh, the next slide, which is up, um, the sports that we are not dealing with, unfortunately, for a couple of different reasons that can't go at all, uh, are, are sports like football and wrestling. Tim talked about cheer, those, those sports that are, have context specific to them. Um, football, not, you can do individual drills in football, but that's more due to basically the sheer numbers, and hopefully with it continuing to increase with our numbers, it will be easier for them maybe down later in the summer to get to drills, but football is currently not going, wrestling is currently not going because they're just, the basis of the game and the sport doesn't allow us to be very effective with no contact with sanitizing. And then there's also sports where we just, due to facilities limitations, are not allowed to be in there. The two main ones that we're dealing with right now, our boys hockey because Ramsey County had shut down all of their arenas, um, and then the one that was the curveball that just got thrown at us, uh, after this slide was put together was swim and dive because of the YMCA. I do have a meeting set, uh, with the YMCA to talk about what the summer looks like as well as what the fall is going to look like for them from a pool standpoint. We actually had a meeting set for this afternoon, so I was hopeful I was going to be able to have some updated information for you. But as you know, with, with the update to pools being open at fifty percent capacity, uh, the folks at the YMCA sent us an email and said, hey, can we postpone? We just got a lot going on right now, and so I'm hopeful that at some point this summer we'll have some updated information for you regarding our partnership with the YMCA and our, our sports, our swim and dive that work through there. But all in all, we're trying to maintain as much as we can and try to get our student athletes out, um, being active at least, working really hard to stay under the MDH and the CDC guidelines with the same entrance and exit and, and going through the symptoms and, and hopeful we get through this summer, and it's a positive experience for all our kids, and we don't, knock on wood, run into any issues where we have to shut down. That's all I have. I think I'm turning it over to Seth unless somebody's got a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mauer, Mr. Peliquin. Is, are there any questions for Mr. Mauer, Mr. Peliquin?
And I think there's one slide that I'm gonna touch on real quick in Mr. Wald's absence, and then it's all, uh, that's gonna be all Mr. Salinger here to wrap it up, but I think that applies to the summer meal program, so Mr. Wald, uh, wasn't able to be in attendance tonight, so I told him I would speak to this for him on his behalf. Uh, just an update on the summer meal program. Um, our summer meal program will continue on Wednesdays through the month of June. Uh, each meal bag will contain at least five breakfasts and five lunches. There is no signup required, uh, prior to, so, and the pickup locations are listed as below, uh, schoolset pickup locations. Um, uh, Wednesdays, uh, from nine thirty to ten thirty in the morning will be, uh, Onika, Otter and Willow Lane Elementarys. And then, uh, Wednesdays in June from eight forty-five, I'm sorry, neighborhood pickup, neighborhood meal pickup locations. Uh, Wednesdays in June from eight forty-five to nine forty-five in the morning, uh, the addresses are listed below, uh, on the slide for locations in Hugo, Maplewood, Badness Heights, and, uh, four addresses in White Bear Lake as well. Um, so I, um, just told him I'd share that with you guys. If you have specific questions, I don't know if I'd be the one to answer those right now, but we can definitely, um, get answers to any questions you may have and, uh, have Tim or, uh, Ms. Bridget Lane, uh, reach back to you.
Thank you guys very much. Are there any questions for, on any of the information that was covered so far? All right, I just wanna compliment you both on your work, and thank you very much, especially around the health and safety stuff, uh, for, uh, a lot of different reasons. So thank you both very much.
You're welcome.
All right, Mr. Salinger, do you wanna provide your update on secondary or, or high school?
Yeah, uh, thank you very much Chair Mullen, um, School Board, Dr. Kazmicek and Cap, Cabinet for having me. Um, we made the decision for summer school to do distance learning again. Um, we added a couple different, um, things that we were do, gonna do as opposed to what was being done during the school year. Um, we heard from students that they needed that contact with teachers and other classmates, so we implemented thirty-minute Google meets, um, for each of the three classes that students are gonna be taking. So students are connecting with teachers at nine, nine-thirty.
So students are connecting with teachers at nine, nine-thirty and ten, and then there's a work seminar class for students at ten-thirty. Um, to earn elective credit for having a job or looking for a job and to gain some um job skills and and interviewing skills and resume building skills. Um, we're using this time to connect with the students, um, to give instructions, uh, answer any pressing questions. And then we get to take real-time attendance, which then allows counselors, myself, um, and some other student support staff to be reaching out to students and families to make sure that they are attending summer school and getting their work done for the credit recovery. Um, we've been really lucky to be able to provide uh either a para or a promise fellow to each teacher within their classrooms to help provide that student support. So paras and um promise fellows are holding sort of office hours for students to be able to check in with them and get additional one-on-one help um over Google meets with them. Um, and that's being done in each and every one of the classes that they're they're currently taking. Um, technology, so thank you Steve and Sarah Florin, um, have been amazing to work with on providing um technology for kids over the summer, allowing students at North, South and ALC to keep their Chromebooks, so there wasn't a large-scale rollout of technology to students, and we were able to keep keep it contactless uh during this timeframe. They also have continued the wireless hotspots for students who didn't necessarily have um wireless access at their house. So all students in summer school have the technology that they need. They're also then providing technology support um for staff and students during this time as well. Um, we are also lucky to have an EL teacher, sped teacher, chemical health teacher available for students during this time. Um, they're still holding uh group meetings for our students at Insight to make sure that um they have the support needed to remain um, chemical-free. Um, we have several EL students enrolled, and we have an EL teacher providing services for those students to make sure that they have access um and equity for all the things that they they need um for special education, or I'm sorry, for uh English learning services. Can I go to the next slide, or does that have to be done by somebody else? Oh, thank you very much, whoever did that. Um, summer school's first day was was today. Um, it was a long day. I will tell you that I am still um getting emails from students regis- registering for summer school now, um, which we're registering them and getting them in classes as soon as possible. So um, that that was great. Uh, it's gonna run Monday through Friday uh for fifteen days, so June eighth to June twenty-sixth. Um, when Marissa asked if anything was gonna change on the slide, I said no, some of these numbers have changed pretty dramatically. Um, we have had over four hundred and fifty students initially referred for summer school. Um, so between when I put this together and today, we've had a hundred extra students referred for summer school. Um, that number from a hundred and fifty has gone up to two hundred students are currently enrolled in summer school. Either uh for classes or through work experience. Um, both of these numbers are higher than what we typically experience during during summer school programs. Um, the referrals are about double what we would usually get, and the students enrolled is about fifty students more than usual. Um, in years past, we've enrolled um White Bear Lake residents who do not go to White Bear Lake area schools, so kids at AFSA or um homeschooled kids or or other kids of that nature. We haven't had any of those students enroll this year in our summer school. So all summer school services are being provided to White Bear Lake area schools students. Um, we have revamped our work experience program, um, because there are uh MDE and MDH guidelines about worksite visits and what would be appropriate to visit work sites. So we've changed it from students having a job and working with employers um to students not necessarily needing a job to earn work experience credit, but building those skills that will get them a job. So as I mentioned before, resume building, mock interviewing, um, job searching and all of those different things. Um, Summer Trades Academy is up, is gonna be running um starting in July, which is a fantastic program that teaches uh students the trades, um, pays them while they're doing it and earns high school credit. Um, we've had, I think at current time, four students um accepted to the Summer Trades Academy. Um, but that will start up in uh the beginning of July, and Dan Ras- Rossiter is the teacher contact um liaison with that. I think, I think that's um good for a update on summer school and our distance learning plan. Um, if anyone has any questions, I would love to be able to answer them.
I have one thing, uh Seth, would you mind uh introducing yourself? There are folks on here who might not know who you are and understand your role. I think we've, we can probably figure it out, but if you just take a moment and explain your role, I I think that would be a good opportunity for you to introduce yourself to the board and others.
Of course. Sorry, um, I'm I'm Seth Salinger. I am a math teacher and instructional coach at um ALC, and I am a math teacher and computer science teacher at South Campus. Um, I run our um summer school, and I'm, this is the third year that I've done this. Uh, Dr. K also knows me because I'm finishing my administrative license uh through the University of Minnesota, so this has been an opportunity for me to um put my administrative skills to use. Um, and then Brian Peliquin knows me because I'm a head coach of our tennis program and Nordic ski program. So I wear a lot of hats within the White Bear Lake District, but it's really great to be able to present to all of you and and show you the hard work that we've done over at the ALC for summer school.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salinger. Is there any questions uh regarding the summer school program? I have one, can you go ahead?
I'm sorry, I was just gonna add, um, I did say that we started today with the two hundred kids that we had enrolled. We had over a hundred and fifty on the first day show up and sign in for their first classes and stay throughout the day. Um, which I should have included, but it wasn't on my slide, so it slipped my mind, and I apologize. Um, so seventy-five percent for distance learning where we had no contact with the kids. Um, Rebecca McCormick and I, who were sort of putting all of this together, considered that a real victory and a real win. Um, we then spent the rest of the day reaching out to those fifty kids and their families to let them know that they needed to sign in tomorrow. Um, so hopefully that number will will drop over the next day or two, and we'll that that was great. We're really excited about that.
So, uh, thank you very much. Um, so the Summer Trades Academy. Um, is that uh being ran through us, or is that being ran through a different organization?
So Summer Trades Academy is run through a different organization, um, that students apply um, a- apply through. Um, it's put together, gosh, uh, I'm sorry, the name of the organization is slipping my mind right now. Um, but school, school districts from across the uh East Metro, uh Northeast Metro apply to it and kids get accepted to it. Um, and this year we had four who um interviewed and and got accepted to it.
All right, brilliant. Thank you very much. Are there any other questions regarding uh any of the summer school programming? Okay. Seeing none, uh, thank you for your report. Uh, we will move on to our next informational item, which is C two, uh, the superintendent's report. Dr. Kazmercheck.
All right, thank you Chair Mullen, members of the board. All right, so we ended uh the unusual twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year with celebrations of our class of twenty twenty and unique pickup events at each of our buildings. If you are interested in watching our virtual graduation ceremonies, you can find links to the YouTube videos that premiered last week on the district's website. The district's mental wellness support line has been extended through the summer. The line will be answered on Wednesdays from two PM to six PM. We will continue to monitor needs and requests and revise the line as needed. And starting this week, all meal pickup locations will move to once a week pickup only on Wednesdays. Each meal bag will contain at least five breakfasts and five lunches. School pickup sites are Onika Elementary, Otter Lake Elementary and Willow Lane Elementary. Various neighborhood meal pickup sites are available as well. Information is available on the support hub of the district website. And I want to reiterate that this program is open to all children and that you are not taking meals away from someone who who you think might need it more. We have enough food for all who um, we have enough food for all who wish to participate. Right, and thank you to our retirees who represent more than seven hundred and thirty-six years of service to the district. While we weren't able to host a retirement celebration this spring, we did put together a video to honor our retirees that was shared out as a Community E newsletter video edition and is available on the district website. We also had a few colleagues who let us know they would be retiring after the video was complete. So I wanted to be sure to acknowledge three additional retirees as well. So thank you all for your service to White Bear Lake area schools. And as the end of June approaches, we will say thank you and congratulations to our current Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, Sarah Paul, who was recently named the new superintendent for North Branch area public schools. And then after a full search process, we recently offered the position to Dr. Allison Gillespie, who has served as our White Bear Lake Area High School North Campus Principal and was recently a principal on special assignment, overseeing projects related to the district's strategic plan, our equity work and the future of learning component of the facilities process. So welcome to this new role, Dr. Gillespie. I want to take a moment to express my appreciation and respect to our Bears community, your strength and perseverance during a year that ended differently than any of us imagined is commendable. I have never been so proud to be a Bear. Thank you, Mr. Mullen.
Thank you, Dr. Kazmercheck. Are there any questions for Dr. Kazmercheck uh regarding his uh report? All right. We will move into our first discussion item, which is the first reading of several board policies, and so I think the best way to do this is to uh list the policies out. I'll read the policy number uh starting from the top to the bottom. Uh, and then uh we'll open it up to questions uh regarding, um, there's several, so I'll go from there. So uh, policy two oh one, legal status of the school board. Policy two oh two, school board officers. Policy two oh three, operation of the school board, governing rules, policy two oh three, Addendum A. Policy two oh four, school board minutes. Policy two oh five, open meeting and closed meeting. Uh, meetings, excuse me. Policy two oh six, public participation in school board meetings slash complaints about persons at school board meetings and data practice. Policy two oh seven, public hearings. Policy two oh eight, development, adoption and implementation of policies. Policy two oh nine, code of ethics. Policy two eleven, criminal or civil action against school district, school board, members, employee or student. Uh, policy two twelve, school board member uh development. Policy two fourteen, out-of-state travel by school board members. And policy two fifteen, school board members' code of conduct. Are there any questions regarding any of these policies? I hope everybody's still there. All right.
Oh. Sorry, took me a minute. My thing wouldn't work.
Do you have a question regarding the policy? And and as
Are we asking questions for all of them right now, or are we?
You can, yes, you can ask questions for any of them. All I would ask that you do is that as you're working on your question, please indicate the policy that you're asking a question about and the section if there is one uh applicable. That way we can all turn to that policy and be able to monitor the question.
Okay. Um, I have several.
Okay.
Um, my first one is on policy two oh six, section two A. Let me get there. Sorry, there's, there's a lot of them to go through. I wasn't sure how this would work. Almost there. Okay, sorry about that. Um, in where we struck the word citizens for persons, and I just guess I wanted a little uh clarification as to what the difference is.
Dr. Kazmercheck?
Yeah, I can, I can address that, and then um, if there's any uh other, anything else to add from either um Jessica or Kim, please, please fill in. I think it was a a term that was used to be broader than just citizens, so it was citizen of the school district. We have, we have members, um, we have people who um who may not necessarily be a citizen of the, who may not live in the school district, so that there was a broader definition, so that's why it was changed.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have other questions, Ms. Thompson?
I do. Um, on the same policy down in section uh six, and it is in letter D. I guess I just, I clarifying this, I, I guess maybe my fault that I haven't seen this before. Um, but it looks as if we are not allowed to take action during a meeting, the first time an item is raised, that would cause discussion. Is this correct?
Dr. Kazmercheck, are there?
I mean, that would be if if somebody were to, you know, demand the board take action tonight. You would not take action tonight.
So that would be like the public comment period where we had several community members who asked us to take action on an item, but I believe we voted on it that same evening.
That was an agenda item that was already on the, on the agenda. So if somebody can't
I know the PLA was on the, did we actually have the public comment period on the agenda?
I guess that emerged through the through the discussion item.
Okay, but it, so just in the future, that would be something we should take into consideration, that if the public asks us um, or somebody brings an item to us uh that evening of a meeting, we should not make action unless, as it states, it's necessary or an emergency. Which I don't, I mean, I don't know what these things would be, but I just wanna make sure that I know for the next time what, that I, that we follow the policy the right way.
Well, I would suggest the policy was followed appropriately. I don't know if any other board members have an opinion on that, but um, appreciate your input on that.
All right. Um, and then I had in section two oh, or policy two oh eight, unless anyone had any other things, I guess, for two oh six that they wanted to ask, but
Ms. Thompson.
My next one is in
I was gonna say, I think what the best way to do this, just because we have the technology piece to it, that I think that you should ask your questions, and then we'll move on to the next person. And if they have a question regarding the same policy, we can come back. I just, I think it's best, uh, just because of technology that we get your questions gone through, and then we'll get to the next member.
Okay. Um, bear with me a minute.
Can you tell us the policy so that we can all get there?
Uh, policy two oh eight, section one. So we struck the words policy development, adoption and implementation to be ongoing uh and substituted those for the word it. Is that what it implies in that statement?
This, this is Jessica. I can, I'm on the policy committee. I can jump in. So I think the thinking here was that it is implied as the policymaking role of the school board, and that encompasses the the things that were struck.
Okay, just, okay. So anything basically then policymaking would be encompassed in there?
Yes.
Okay. Then my next one would be in two oh nine. And section three. Sorry, hold on one minute. I wanna make sure I Okay, uh, sorry, actually, um, section three in the B portion, uh the first one, and this might just be silly, but, and I, I agree with the statement, but I just wanna make sure that we're following, I'm not sure what the rules are, but we're following, I'm not sure what the rules are, but it says that the primary focus of the school board duties is in the making of policy, but we've changed it to focus on education policy as much as possible. Um, could somebody just explain why we added the word "education" to make it seem like it's the main focus?
I'd ask, um, I don't know, Kim or Jessica, if you have some insight on the conversation about that? And some of these, you know?
Yeah, some of these might be MSBA suggestions, because we, we take edits from the Minnesota School Board Association. And so, and this one in particular, I don't remember if that was an MSBA suggestion. My, my guess is just to be, it was done to be as specific as possible and say that, you know, education is what we're here for and, and for the students. But that might be something that we can look into the MSBA suggestions. Kim, do you remember?
I don't recall. Um, I think that was the policy committee meeting that I looked at the policies, but at the last minute I couldn't attend due to work issues. But you're likely right, Jessica, that it was due to an MSBA change. So many of these changes are MSBA, um, recommended changes.
Okay. Thank you. My next one is in Section, uh, 215, or Policy 215. And let me get there. And it was, I mean, let's see, Section 4. I'm sorry, I think I might- Okay. Sorry, that's the wrong one.
Well, you're looking for that, Angela. Just word of correction. I was thinking it was the second reading policies that were coming across tonight, that, uh, it was that meeting that I missed. The, the 200s that we're looking at now, uh, I was at that meeting, and I really, yeah, don't recall, um, that change that you had addressed for, uh, 209.
Okay. And I might have, my, I might have wrote, wrote it down wrong, so bear with me. I'm sorry. And I think that's it. I think my other stuff is in a different area for later. Sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Are there any other questions? Are there any other questions regarding these, uh, policies that are up for their first reading this evening? Uh, again, I want to say that they will be back, uh, uh, for their next. Ms. Newmaster, Dr. Newmaster, did you have a question?
I just have to say, I noticed one word. I wasn't anything other than just amazed and appreciative of the fact that the committee has gone through these policies. And I know how important it is to update it and follow the MSBA suggestions in many cases. But I did notice the change to person versus citizen. And I thought just from the con, what's going on these days, it was nice not to say you must be a citizen to be part of this, because we have lots of people. And I thought the word "people" or "person" was much more inclusive. So that's my only comment on all of that work. And bless you all for getting up early in the morning to do this hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Newmaster. Are there any other comments or questions regarding, uh, these policies that are before us for the first reading? Okay. Uh, seeing none, oh, is there someone? Did I miss someone? Seeing none, uh, we will work into our first operational item, E1, uh, which is the action on the property and casual insurance. Uh, Dr. Kazmercheck, is this you?
Yeah, I will, uh, I'll, I'll kick it off. And, um, again, it was brought up earlier. Mr. Wald had to tend to a family matter today, so he's not able to be here. So we will be, I'll, I'll be quarterbacking as best I can in his absence. And so right now, um, Mr. Mazorik, are you available to?
Yes, I am.
And I know we have another guest on to, who will help talk through this, this particular item. So, Mr. Mazorik?
Good evening, Chairman Mullen, members of the board, and Dr. Kazmercheck. Discussion item or the action item tonight is our property and liability insurance. We have been part of the Minnesota Insurance Scholastic Trust for the last six years. Um, and back a couple of months ago, we were alerted that, um, because of the hardening of the insurance market, that we would be probably seeing a large increase. If you recall, last year, we did also receive a large increase. Um, and that's when the hardening of the market basically started. Our consultant on the, our, on the, uh, for the trust is Gallagher Insurance. They've been working very hard to, uh, um, go or get, um, companies to bid on our, our coverages. And I think at this point, we have probably the best deal that we can get. The overall pool, for the 23 districts, and actually it's going to be 24 districts for the 2021 year, we're, we're experiencing a 76% um, in, increase in our premiums. Our, our portion will be increasing, um, from this year to next year, 59.5. So because of that, you can, you can see that some districts are going to get more than what we're getting. Um, but the averaging, but the average was a 76% increase in our premium. There are basically two places where the, um, our in, in coverage was, um, or the cost went up. That was in our excess property. It went from $81,287 up to $187,000. Um, and in the loss fund. So the loss fund is what we kind of, we, we pre-fund, uh, part of the losses as a pool. And, uh, in order for us to get the coverage for the excess co, or excess property, we had to increase the loss fund. So our in, insurance from 19, uh, 1920 went from $326,531 to a worst-case scenario of $520,943.433. Um, our consultants are still trying to see if they can, um, lower that for the whole pool. But at this point in time, we're, um, taking action to at least, um, bind the coverage for what we already know. Um, Nick Lano from Gallagher is also online. If, uh, you have any other further questions, or Nick, if you would like to add to what I just, um, presented.
Nick, are you there?
I thought I saw Nick get off, to be honest with you. Oh, no, he's there.
Uh, Nick, we're not hearing you if you're, if you're talking.
He might not be able to, uh, participate. So with that, unless the, you, uh, as a board, have, um, some questions regarding our coverage? Since the inception, we've been in the, um, pool since the 1415 school year. And at that time, we experienced a 31% decrease in our premiums. Um, and at the same time, over the last six years, we've, um, we've been below what we were in 1314 by about $120,000. What, at the same time, increasing our property coverage, um, with their values going up. So I think we've, it's been good for us. The last two years have been not quite as good for the whole insurance industry, and we're not alone in that.
Hey, Tom, this, this is David Howard. I'm also on the line. I'm, I'm Nick's co-broker.
Oh, okay. David, I knew you were there.
I don't know what Nick's technical difficulty is, but I, I, I had to call in. I didn't, I couldn't get onto the video. But, um, I, I, I can speak for, uh, for Nick and, and put this in context a little bit, if you don't mind.
Oh, go ahead.
All, all right. So, um, Tom referred to the, the two areas that had the, the significant increases. The first one being the excess property. We are buying, uh, as a pool, property insurance over a, a million dollars. And that, that's the piece, uh, that is, that is causing the, the huge increase. Um, we had a similar situation with other state entities, public entities this year, that they have kind of the same format, where we're, again, we're buying something called excess insurance. Before, um, during the softer market, we were able to take advantage and drive the rate down every year to a point where it was, it was, as Tom said, below market. This year with the, the market started hardening, and then we got hit with COVID, and then we got hit with the riots and everything like that. The, I've, I've been doing this for 37 years, ladies and gentlemen, and I've never seen anything like this. And so anyways, our percentage went up a lot higher because our, our premium was so low to start with. It's a correction. We're still below the market, but again, it's just because we, we took such advantage of the lower rates, it, it, it's such a significant increase this year. It looks, it, 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 uh, again, but it is just a property or a market correction. The loss fund, keep in mind that one of the ways we save money in a pool is by paying the, the lower claims. We pay claims up to $100,000 out of our pool. And, and to fund that, we collect a loss fund. And in the past, the, and so that, that's missed money. That's White Bear Lake money. That's in a missed bank account. It's not premium. It does not go to the insurance company. And that's what we return surplus, uh, in, in the form of cash to our members. We paid our first dividend this year to the original members of 2013, because that loss fund had closed out. Right now, on our balance sheet, we have $2.1 million in surplus that would have normally gone to an insurance company and never come back, that is earmarked for future dividend returns. All right? There is a timeline, because you have to make sure all claims are closed. But the, the pool is working, because we have over $2 million available to our group that, again, would have normally been paid to an insurance company. So this loss fund, the actuaries get involved, and they require us to fund up to a certain level of confidence. And in the past, they allowed us to fund only up to a 55% confidence level. So that means 5.5 out of every 10 years, uh, it will be enough to cover what our, what our losses, what we expect our losses to be. This year, because of everything else that's going on, the insurance company is now requiring us to fund 85% confidence level. All right? So they're saying to us, no, we, we want to make sure that you're going to fund those losses, because anything over that, the insurance company pays. So they got a little tired. We had two years where we exhausted our loss fund, and the insurance company got involved. So that's one reason that went up. Another reason it went up is because we decided as a pool, as we see premiums increasing, that the way to combat that is to get our, our, our pool to retain more of our own losses. Okay? To, to bet on ourselves, if you will. So this year, we're proposing from going from $100,000 of every claim that our pool pays to $250,000. It's the sign of a, of a, of a pool that's starting to mature. And now that we're in year, what are we in here? Year seven, year eight? Um, the pool is starting to mature, and it's better for us to pay that money to ourselves rather than to an insurance company. But the result is a significant increase in, in that loss fund, because our confidence level is, has gone up that we have to fund, and we're deciding to take on more risk. The only good news for that is that, again, that's missed money. That's not insurance com, company money. And if we, if the actuaries are right, that's money that will come back in future years to White Bear Lake in the form of a dividend or a surplus. That's kind of the context of, 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 of what happened. I, I'm willing to, uh, for, available to take on any other questions. Tom was right. White Bear Lake is, is probably performing the best in the group. And that's why you received an additional 15% credit that others did not. There's a, um, we, we reward, uh, members that have better-than-average performance, and we penalize the ones that have the worst performance. One other thing I wanted to mention about that, uh, property insurance, another thing that insurance companies are doing that they didn't do before is when they, they do their catastrophic modeling, the worst thing that can happen, it, it used to be they didn't include all the hail information from Minnesota. Minnesota's hail claims have gotten worse and worse and worse over the last decade. And now the insurance companies include this convective modeling in their insurance, especially in the reinsurance. It has driven the ra, rates up significantly. So all of these things have combined, uh, to just create, I mean, it's affecting the, it's affecting the insurance companies the same way it's affecting school districts and businesses across the world. It's just something we've never seen before. But I think the takeaway is, is that the pool is working. It's the best method for what we call a hard market, because we can retain the, uh, the quality coverage and, uh, and, and, and we keep that into the future. Where other insurance companies now are striking that stuff out. They're putting all kinds of exclusions for traumatic brain injury, for COVID virus, uh, et cetera, et cetera. We don't have any of that. We're not changing our terms.
All right. Thank you very, is there anything else, Mr. Mazorik?
Not for me, no.
Okay. I think, uh, at this point, it's probably best for us to, uh, uh, get a motion on it on the table, on the floor. And, uh, the administration is recommending that we approve the property and casual insurance package, uh, with the Minnesota Insurance Scholastic Trust, missed, uh, in the amount of $520,943.33 effective July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. Uh, is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Chapman. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Dr. Arcan. Are there any questions regarding the recommended action?
Chair Mullen, uh, by not so much a question, I've got, uh, just a comment to, to make. Is, is, I think the board knows, um, my job is dealing with insurance on a day-to-day basis for one of our major healthcare systems. And I can tell you that, um, this, what we're seeing on the property side is exactly what is happening in the industry. Uh, as much as we don't like it, any of us, to see the, the high price tags, um, that are coming about, it is indicative of what is happening in the insurance industry. Quite frankly, I am, uh, rather pleasantly surprised to see that on some of the other lines of coverage, that there haven't been greater increases than what this graphic shows, because, uh, the, the entire, uh, commercial insurance industry, and, and to some extent, I would guess it's going to trickle into the property, or excuse me, the, uh, personal, uh, insurance industry, but the commercial industry is going through just, uh, basically a convulsion. I mean, it's, uh, the hardening of the market, and by hardening, we mean where prices are, our premiums are going way up, coverages are being restricted in some cases, policies are being non-renewed by insurers or canceled. This is, uh, this is, you know, I, like I say, I'm pleasantly surprised, but what I'm seeing on these other lines and the property, we're just, I can tell you, we're holding our breath where I work, because, uh, our property renewal comes up 10-1. And we have received all kinds of indications. It's, it's not going to be likely very pretty. So just my two cents, uh, on this whole thing.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Um, are there any other comments, concerns, questions that, uh, that, that board members would like to say? All right. Uh, seeing none, uh, this will require a roll call vote. Uh, would the clerk please rec, uh, read the roll?
Thompson?
Hi.
Arcan?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Allison, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Dr. Newmaster?
Oh, I thought I turned it on. Aye.
Thank you very much. And the motion passes. We will now move into our next operational item, E two, which is the action on refinancing of the twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen leases. Dr. Kazmercheck, is this you?
Yep, I'll take it. Thank you, Chair Mullen, members of the board. And some of you were around back when these projects took place. And so it's a sign that we have some longevity on the board for some of you perhaps. But back in twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen, we used lease levy as the financing tool to build gymnasium additions at Lake Gears, Matoska and Willow Lane Elementary Schools. The final years of payment on the gyms are fiscal year twenty eight for Matoska and fiscal year twenty nine for Lake Gears and Willow Lane. So the current interest rates, terms of the agreement and current and future bonding plans make refinancing, refinancing now a financially prudent move. So I believe we have Shelby McQuay on. I hope we can hear you.
Hopefully. Can you hear me?
Oh, yes. Success. And I will, I think I'll just turn it over to you, Shelby. Do you need the, what do you need us to display? Or are you just going to talk through it?
So I see what's in your board packet is your resolution. Do you also have the pre-sale report? Otherwise, I'll just speak just briefly to the resolution.
We have the pre-sale report that we could bring up if that, if that would be helpful. Otherwise.
Yep. Then we can look at the, the numbers.
Okay.
And the savings there, so.
Either Marissa or Steve will bring up that, that document.
All right. So.
You'll have where to go or how to navigate it. So tell us what page that's on.
Yeah, you can just go ahead and move to the, the second page there. So as Dr. Kazmercheck mentioned, these were the three leases that were the additions to the elementary schools. So Matoska, Willow Lane and Lake Gears Elementary. And what we're doing today, so we've been, you know, watching these, they, they're relatively low interest rates to begin with. But by packaging them all together and then issuing one certificate of participation, you're going to sort of reap the benefits of the lower interest rates that you get from, from one renewing now or refunding it now because of the lower interest rates. But also in terms of packaging as a certificate of participation or a COP so that you can put it out for public bid, which tends to generate lower interest rates than lease, lease purchase. So the current interest rate that you locked in at with the twenty thirteen A was three point seven five. And I'm looking right in the middle of the purposes section here. The twenty thirteen B was locked in at four percent as an annual interest rate. And then the twenty fourteen was a three point eight nine. And our current estimates for the refinancing of these would be a one point six. So savings through fiscal years, twenty eight and then twenty nine for the other two. What that means in terms of your total savings to, to the, the lease levy is about six hundred and fifty thousand on a not present value basis. So almost eight percent of your total debt service that you're saving. Each year, that's about, you know, a little over ninety thousand. So that's really good savings. So by moving from a lease purchase to a certificate of participation, you'll still be accessing the lease levy through this and the savings are not going to, again, as you've gone through this before with other refundings, the savings are not to the district, but they are to the taxpayers. So on your levy, that's where the savings would, would come into play. So the authority still is the one twenty six C forty. That's the lease levy authority that, that you're using to, to, to refund these. The total term of the new issue will be about eight and a half years. So kind of less than that range that you want to really look to refinance again. So, so what we end up here will be locked in for the remainder of the term. These will be deemed bank qualified. So you're well over for this year, your full, your ten million dollar capacity for a bank qualified with the two hundred and fifty million dollar issue of the two, twenty twenty A. So because these were bank qualified to begin with, you can then deem them bank qualified. So it sort of gets you into this additional resource. Bank qualified issuance just means that you have access to kind of a broader market. Because there's benefits to banks in terms of their tax, tax benefits to, to bid on these. So that's where we're again seeing that one point six low interest rate. So I'm just moved on to the next page. You'll go through sort of the same process again as you did with the other, the twenty twenty A issue. And you'll get a rating for this. So it'll be your full process that you go through for a rating. And your current underlying rating is a double A. Because these are not general obligation, they're an annual appropriation that you make each year on your lease levy. The rating is notched one below your rating. So your double A rating. And then one notch below is the double A minus, which is still a great rating. So again, recommending these because of the lower interest rates of the certificate of participation. There's a little bit higher cost of issuance associated with it because you have to do a full official statement to put it out to market, but the, the costs are made up in terms of the lower interest rate. Generally, and I think I'll, I'm moving on to the next page under other considerations. So sometimes when we go to market, you'll go to market on the same day and then the board will award that night. Several of your bond issues, you've done a parameters bond issue. So the resolution you're adopting tonight sets a, a limit on how much you must save in order to award this. So, so other, under, other considerations, you're actually designating as part of the resolution tonight. You're designated the superintendent or assistant superintendent for finance and operations and a board officer to accept the most favorable proposal. And then that'll be July ninth, so not a board meeting date. And then you'll ratify on the thirteenth. That extra flexibility, one gets you off of a Monday, which tends to have a lot of bond issues. So maybe an additional favorable rate with that. But also to move this to close on the payment date, which is July thirtieth. So all that, then your board, the board will ratify or sort of affirm the sale at the July thirteenth meeting. The, in the incorporated into the resolution are the parameters. So as part of the savings, even though we're estimating that it'll save about eight percent, we're ensuring that you, you won't award if the savings is less than two point five percent. So it's sort of a, kind of a backstop for the board to say, no, we don't want to go through with this if the savings are minimal. So that's what's incorporated into the resolution. Just a review of your, your existing debt, we're continually keeping an eye on that. And, and your twenty twelve B school building bonds are callable coming up on February one, twenty twenty. We are estimating the savings right now to be about a hundred and seventy five thousand. So we'll continue to keep an eye on that and move forward with that or recommend to move forward with that if the savings continue to be there at the time that the bonds are callable. Moving on, continuing disclosure and arbitrage monitoring are pieces of the tax exempt debt issuance process that you continually partake in. And you have been, and there's no change with this bond issue there. The risk factors listed and will be incorporated into the official statement are just the fact that this is an annual appropriation that the board is making and not a general obligation bond. So different than, than how you accessed a bond issue for your voter approved bond. Your other service providers are listed there. The schedule is on the next page that I sort of outlined will work with Mr. Wald and Dr. Kazmercheck on the due diligence call and distributing the official statement, pulling that all together, the conference with the rating agency. And then we'll be back to you with the results on July thirteenth. Then on July thirtieth is the date that the old lease will be paid off and the new COP will be, begin. So just the last remaining pages to show the, the sources and uses, why the power mount is set at, at what it is, the cost of issuance. Prior original debt service is listed on the pages eight, nine and ten for the twenty, the two twenty thirteen issues and then the twenty fourteen issue. So you can see the intra, or the average interest rate at three point seven five, four, and then three point eight nine. And then I moved all the way down to page eleven, which shows the, the new payment schedule. For, for this issue, the one point six percent true interest cost is listed on that page. And then the next page is just the savings comparison. I would note very briefly that S and P has made it known to us that they would like to see a four one payment date instead of a two one payment date. So we intend to distribute a revised pre-sale report to administration that they can pass along to you with just a change in the payment date. Their S and P has tended to notch it down, notch your rating down two ratings if you do not have enough time in between budget adoption and when your first payment is due. Of course, in Minnesota, that's not really a problem because we know you have to adopt your budget by six thirty. But they're looking at it from a national point of view. And so we're just going to outline this debt service schedule with their preferences to ensure that the rating stays as high as possible. And we'll work with the administration on that. So overall, I think it's a good time to move forward. It's great savings to the district taxpayers for, and to look in at lower interest rates given the current market right now. So I'm happy to answer any questions on that. Go to the rest of the session.
Thank you very much for the report. I think at this point, it's probably best if we get a motion on the table and, and the recommended, yes, sir.
Can I, can I read the recommended action? I made a change and we're going to, so you were just going to do that correct?
Yep. So please do so because I've got, go ahead.
I'm going to do that. So the recommended action is that we approve the resolution stating the intention of the school board to issue a lease purchase financing and refunding certificates of participation series twenty twenty B. So that would be the motion.
Okay, you've heard the recommended action. Is there a motion to do so?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Dr. Newmaster. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Thompson. Any discussion regarding the recommended action? I'm not seeing any, I would ask, this will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk to please read the roll.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcan?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you all very much. We will now move into our third operational item, E three, which is the action on the transportation contract. Dr. Kazmercheck, is this you?
Thank you, Chair Mullen and members of the board. So Mr. Trito, are you still there?
I am here.
All right. So do you, do you want to just take it over or?
Sure. Either or.
Yeah, go, why don't you just go right ahead and jump in as you were part of the, the team that worked with our vendors to come up with these contracts?
Alrighty. Thank you. Chair Mullen, school board, Dr. Kazmercheck. This is a process that we started back in February, serving legal notices and having meetings with our contractors. As you know, we have about forty three of our own buses plus some type three vans. And with that, we need some additional help. So that's where we look to outside contractors to help us with those resources. We had about twenty one firms that submitted a quote to us. Two of the full service providers, First Student and MTN. MTN is not a new company, but they're new to us. They've been working over in Mounds View. They've been awarded this Stillwater contract. We are looking to have them as a backup service provider. Just in case, given the times that we're in and the unknowns. We feel as though we needed that as well as they will be helping out on the type three side. The type three contracted transportation services, these are the providers that will meet our district special ed and special ed routes and, and just those low density type things outside the district. We currently contract with three of them. We are looking at renewing them for a two plus two. All these are two plus two contracts and with that, that's about all I have. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Trito. I think the best thing for us to do would be to, unless Dr. Kazmercheck had anything additional, I would recommend that we have a recommended action. And I would ask us to get a motion on the table and then we'll open it up for discussion. So we have a recommended action to approve the agreement with the Twin Cities Transportation, Inc., Treasured Transportation, Inc., Halo, Inc., to provide type three student transportation services for two years commencing August first, twenty twenty and ending July thirty first, twenty twenty two, with an option to extend for two years consistent with the Minnesota statute twenty fifteen, section one twenty three B fifty two. Subs, and I don't need to read the subsection. So is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Thompson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Chapman. Any discussion regarding the recommended action?
Chair Mullen, I have a question, two questions.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Ellison.
So in looking at the recommended action, we're taking action tonight on the type three student transportation services, correct? And not the First Student and MTN? Is that right?
Yes, that is my understanding, yes. And I, and Mr. Trito, if you can, you want to add to that, but I believe.
Yeah, in looking at this, I think the direction was to approve all five of the contracts. I believe those were presented in the package.
Okay, on my, on my recommended action that I have, I only have the three. So if we need to amend it, I need, we probably need to do that now.
No, let me, let me make sure that everything is in here. So we have First Student.
Yeah. First transportation agreement listed in the board packet is First Student.
Okay, and then the, under the minutes that I received this evening, it was for Twin Cities Transportation, Treasured Transportation and Halo. So if there's some additional, then I want to make sure we get those. Jessica, is that what's on, Ms. Ellison, is that what's on your minutes also?
Yes, that's what's on the minutes and that's why I wanted to double check. I also had a question about the, the backup transportation once we've addressed this issue.
So I would, whatever steps we need to take to amend the motion, the First Student is, is in the packet, as is the, the MTN. So there was, those were inadvertently left off of the recommended action?
So, Ms. Ellison, if you can hold on one second, I think what we'll do is, Ms. Thompson, if you and Mr. Chapman would be willing to amend your motion to include First Student and any of the other transportation that was in the board packet, is that amenable, is that agreeable to you?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'd ask the record to reflect that, Ms. Thompson, Mr. Chapman?
Yes, I'm fine with it.
Okay, so I would ask the record to reflect that all the transportations that are in the packet. Ms. Ellison, if you can ask, if you can let the minutes reflect that, I would appreciate it.
Yes, they're included now.
Okay, so then from there, I believe that you have a question and please go ahead and state your question.
Sure. I just have a question about the MTN as a backup provider. My question is, is this something that we've done in the past or is this in response to potential needs for more busing depending on what happens with distance learning or a hybrid coming up this fall? What was the, the need for the backup?
Yeah, currently we use Rabine Transportation for three of our routes. And they were significantly higher in price. And in talking with First Student, they looked to take on those three additional routes that we had last year. So, but with that being said, we still want to be able to make sure we have a backup plan. we have a backup plan for activities in case uh there just seems to be a shortage. As you know, there's a shortage of bus drivers and with the COVID and and so forth, I've had recently four drivers of my own retire. So um we just feel as though there's a need for that uh additional ba- backup. There's no guarantee they'll get the work. However, they're there in case we need them.
Well, Jessica, I think the, I mean, I, my two cents, the the answer is yes. We've done this in the past. We can, we'll continue doing it in the future and in the, in the future, uh might very well be because of the impacts of of what we're experiencing right now here this spring and then into the fall. So it'll be probably more important than ever that we have we have a backup provider.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, is there any other questions or comments regarding uh the recommended action? Uh seeing none. Um we have a motion and a second. We have an amended recommendation. Uh this will require a roll call vote and I would ask the clerk to please require, uh call the roll.
Thompson?
Hi.
Arcan?
Hi.
Chapman?
Hi.
Ellison, hi. Mullin?
Hi.
Newmaster?
Hi.
Okay, the motion passes. Thank you very much. We'll now move into our next operational item, E four, which is the action on the approval of the NJPA purchase order for the ALC Phase One renovation. Uh Dr. Kazmercheck?
We thank you, Chair Mullin, members of the board. So the first project funded by the November referendum is scheduled to begin this summer and to be completed before school starts in the fall. It's the Phase One project at the ALC. So this renovation will provide updated security features, including an improved secure entrance as well as a renovated office space. One unique element of this project is that we are using the National Joint Powers Alliance, or NJPA, now managed by Sourcewell. This process allows us to benefit from the joint purchasing power of the program and will allow us to move more quickly to get the work started than if we were using a traditional RFP process. And um as we will on our other projects. So instead of approving bids, the board is asked to approve a purchase agreement. So Bob Jansen from uh the district's construction management firm of Kraus Anderson is on, I believe. Um and he is here to explain the NJPA process and answer any questions that you have. Well, Bob, are you, are you there?
Yep, uh I'm here. Uh uh thank you for your guys' time tonight, uh members of the board. Uh so real quick, I'll kind of explain the end, the National Joint Powers Agreement. We is, Kraus Anderson has contracts throughout the state of Minnesota. Uh these contracts um allow us to to uh utilize, to utilize the EGordian process, which is a set, uh it is a catalog per se. I've got Chris here with Gordian who can explain a little bit more in depth the actual Gordian process and what that means and how it uh pertains and how you guys, how White Bear may have used it in the past. Uh Chris, are you available as well?
I am.
Chris, you wanna, you wanna quick talk a little bit more about what the NJPA does?
Yeah, the NJPA was set up by the state of Minnesota as a service cooperative um and given the legislative authority to negotiate contracts on behalf of their members. It's now uh done a marketing change and it's it's uh Sourcewell. They're out of Staples, Minnesota. Um I had them check, you guys are members and have purchased um several items on a contract purchasing basis. And this EZIQC program that you're proposing to use is the construction arm of Sourcewell. Gordian, who I work for, is the uh administrator for, on behalf of Sourcewell, of the program. And the reason we get involved, as Bob said, was Gordian is the worldwide leader in construction cost data. So the whole program revolves around our construction cost data. Um which is a construction task catalog of over two hundred eighty thousand construction items. And our team comes in and does market research in the, in the Twin Cities. The, the state of Minnesota is actually divided up into seven different regions. So um there's different pricing in seven regions around the, around the state. And what Sourcewell then does is advertises for bid, jumps through all of the legal requirements that you guys would normally have to if you issued an RFP for any construction. And then general contractors in roofers and payers are invited to respond to that bid. Um just as if there was a major construction project. Then they're asked to submit a competitive, a sealed competitive bid, known as their adjustment factor, to which they will apply that adjustment factor to all of the pricing in our catalog. And then Sourcewell uh reviews those bids on a best value basis with the adjustment factor being the largest uh heav- most heavily weighted component. And then they award contracts to, to various contractors. And then, as was discussed, you guys are allowed to then access construction services directly through one of those awarded contractors.
Thanks, Chris. Um some of the, some of the benefits in why we kinda chose to use the NJPA upon discussion is uh that the way we can expedite projects, this one in particular, these small project, these projects of this size where we're remodeling essentially the front entrance, providing more security, some en- some uh mechanical improvements. Uh so overall, we're looking at a duration of about six to eight weeks on this, on this. Uh we can expedite this process. Essentially, the plans on this were received in uh April and we were able to get this out, to competitively bid this as well, make sure and we got we got, we did end up with uh very good coverage on this project in particular. Um take advantage of that, get shop drawings moving a lot faster than what we would have with the more traditional model. Uh in this way, we can ensure that we will, can finish the project here uh over summer. Um is there any other questions pertaining to the process?
Um sure, there are some. Go ahead, Dr. Newmaster.
I'm just wondering now, after we had our extensive conversation the last time around about prevailing wage, how does that fit in with this bidding process? Do they meet our requirement that we discussed exhaustively before?
They do. Uh with this project, all uh, eh we do have the same requirements on it. Uh prevailing wages will, it will and have been applied to the numbers that, that we put together for this project.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? So there's a recommended action uh would be to approve the NJ.
I had a question, sorry. Always trouble getting that mute off. Um I was just wondering, in here, it looks like we just have little bits and pieces of the full uh language that would be involved in the document.
I'm sorry, could, I'm sorry, could you, could you expand on that, please?
Um like C says that section eighteen point two shall be deleted in its entirety or B is section seven point, but it, it would appear there's a lot of other sections to this, but we don't, we only have part of it.
Yep, so, so right now, the, so uh the point that we're at now, this is a, the letter that you are viewing is the is the first component of it. There's an amendment that comes out that gives you a full breakout of the quantities that are being put into the Gordian system. So we are working through that process right now. So essentially with the PO that you're seeing, uh this document has given you essentially the, the not to exceed the uh, the, the pricing that we've put together as a lump sum. In here, we on, in this scenario and with the way that the National Joint Powers and these purchase orders would work, Kraus Anderson carries all the contracts uh versus when we do the CMA uh process and the school district would hold these subcontracts. So this is one purchase agreement for the, for, for that uh number. But the amendment then should be coming here in the next week that would also break out and show uh some more detail to what the system kicks out and how it comes to that number.
Okay, so in the, in part D there, I guess I'm not sure how the uh num- number twelve. Part D, uh I guess, could you just explain? Is this just saying if, you know, damage, I mean, I, I think I understand what this is saying. Say one of the subcontractors or somebody else was to cause damage during the job. I guess, could you just explain how, what, what is being said there?
Um on part D, um yeah, let me just real quick, just get to where you were at. So you said it was under twelve?
Yep. Yep, that says inserted as section twenty-five point seven. And then there's that.
Um that's gonna be uh contract language. It's gonna help sort out uh as far as the insurance that, that would apply versus builders and uh, and if there is damage uh to help sort out claims.
Okay, that just says the owner and the contractor waive all rights against each other and any of the subcontractors, sub subcontractors, agents and employees and each other. Um I guess, maybe I'm reading it wrong, but is, who, who is it saying is responsible for the damage?
It would be typically, it's gonna fall, it's gonna, with this, the way that it's written, it would be under the responsibility of uh who, whoever would be at fault for that damage.
Okay.
It would, it would, it would, it would fall to that. So, so it helps to protect essentially the owner, uh the contractors that were not involved in the damage to make sure that, that, that upon investigation that the, the contractor that would be at fault would be responsible for it and their insurance would be responsible for that.
Okay, and so then that's part E there where it just says the contractor and owner waive claims against each other for any consequential damages arising or relating to the agreement?
Correct.
Okay, ju- okay. All right, that's it.
Okay, any other questions?
Don, you're muted.
I apologize. Thank you. So I wanna get a motion on the table before we proceed any further and then we'll open it up into discussion, please. So we have a recommended action to approve the NJPA purchase agreement for the security and office renovation at the area learning center. Is there a motion to do so?
All moved.
Who, who made the motion? Ms. Ellison?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Arcan. All right, uh there any other questions regarding the recommended motion? I have a, I have one question. Um so currently, uh the district uses the uh the best responsible bidder policy, so this would not take a play, uh this would not take effect uh because you guys will then select all the contractors?
Correct. We, we will select all the co- all the contractors and we did put this, put this out uh for bid and we did get coverage and uh uh with our policy as well. We will make sure that we are selecting the uh most responsible bidder for this as well.
Okay, and so how, I, I respectfully understand that uh puts us in a bigger pool uh with other contractors. I'm just kind of curious on, can you just kinda give me a, a quick scenario of how this benefits us? We lose, we basically lose site control to you guys and I'm trying to understand how this benefits the district.
Uh the ba- the biggest benefit is gonna be schedule. Uh it allows, it allows this to be to expedite the, the bid process so that while we are still, we're, and while we were in the the design phase, we were able to get this out and get this, and get this for bid, get shop drawings moving to start procuring uh the material that's needed to complete the project uh before uh school for uh the next uh school sea- school year starts.
So that couldn't have been done um with this typical system that is used in school construction?
Um in, in this, in this case, we, with, with uh how the how the plans were coming along and with uh the design on this, we, we didn't feel that we would be able to get the project started uh in a timely fashion to be able to uh to complete the project before this, with the school year were to start.
So, Dr. Kazmercheck, or am I wrong to say that we've been planning these uh additions and renovations for almost a, a year now? Or at least six months, correct?
The schematic, I don't know exactly when the schematic design process started for the ALC, but um within the last few months, yeah, four, four months or so. Or five months.
Oh, okay. I mean, I listen, I'm all for ex- expediting the, the system and making things better and making things quicker. I'm just trying to understand how this system is, you know, we've already been kind of planning for the last six months. Now they're telling us we don't have enough time. So I'm, I'm just kinda curious. Did they bring this to us or did we seek this out?
Um well, I wasn't in the initial conversations with um with Kraus Anderson and certainly was involved. And I know this is something that was discussed early on as an option. Um we've used the National Joint Powers Alliance before. They, we, we meet all the bid requirements um that the state uh has for school districts through the, through the joint power. So this is not a, is not an uncommon model. So it certainly is a viable option for the, for the smart projects.
Okay, I, I respect that. I, I'm sorry, I'm someone, I'm getting some feedback from the employees. Um I respect that. I'm just trying to figure out, I mean, they're telling us that this model isn't. If you haven't gone in and kind of made sure what is what it is, then how do we trust uh you know, that it's what it's supposed to do is gonna get done?
Well, um again, I, I know we've used the NJPA in the past. So I, I don't know. I mean, it's vetted, they, it's allowed by statute and the common procurement.
Hey, Chris, is, is, Chris, are you still available as well?
Yes, I am.
Would, uh do you wanna talk to that a little bit in uh as far as cost history and I mean, we just to the extent that we have been using it?
Yeah, um what this is, is, this is really a procurement tool. This allows you to work directly with an awarded general contractor. There's, nothing will change in the construction process. It is a direct uh construction contract between you, the district and Kraus Anderson. So there are a number of benefits to using the system. Of course, I'm a little biased, but, but you know, the uh the biggest one is you'd be, get to develop a relationship with the general contractor as opposed to being forced to use whoever happens to come in as the low bid on any particular project. Uh a byproduct of that is that you develop that relationship and now the contractor is rewarded or, or has the opportunity to be rewarded for future work based on their performance. As opposed to the traditional method where they're gonna try to do a good job for you and then also hope that when they roll the dice on the next bid, they're also the low bidder. So there's an inherent ability, uh or there's an inherent accountability factor to this. It also allows, as we've seen, you know, the, the timing factor really in this case was not so much the, the bid and how long that would take you. It al- it allowed for a little bit of a collaborative effort between the design team and the contractor. So the contractor is getting access to some of the plans ahead of time and, and can offer. A lot of times, we've seen some very significant um savings or value engineering done by having the contractor involved throughout the design process, not just waiting till the design is completely finished and then just given a couple of weeks to take a look at it and, and uh develop bids. So uh but as far as the project Uh, but as far as the project itself, it's a regular construction contract between. Yourselves and Kraus Anderson as the general contractor. Um, and everything that's inherent to that normal construction process, Gordian will stay involved. If there's any change orders, and the key here is you get to work with, directly with the, the general contractor. But there's an inherent backup or accountability using our construction cost data, so any, this initial. Price proposal will have to be justified using the construction task catalog, and that's where Bob referenced that that will be coming. And then any change throughout the process. Has to be backed up using our numbers, so you don't have the, the opportu- the contractor doesn't have the opportunity. To really potentially leave some items out to be that low bidder. And then once they get halfway through the project, have the district over a barrel. And try to make up some lost ground on a change order, because everything reverts back to the exact same pricing structure. That we had to use at the beginning to develop the original price proposal.
So then a follow-up to that would be, is, uh, so currently, um, we are. For, uh, Kraus K is, is a construction manager, and they're providing a service, and there's a fee associated with that service. Is there a fee also associated with this service?
There is an administrative fee that the contractor pays to, uh, Sourcewell and to Gordian. As part of. The, that was factored in there, that had to be factored into their original adjustment factor when they bid on the program.
So the school district does not pay that fee?
No.
No.
You have one PO, uh, with Kraus Anderson, our paperwork is there just to justify the procurement process. To show that you didn't bypass the competitive bid process, it just took place earlier on with Sourcewell.
Alright, I appreciate you answering my questions, thank you.
Sure.
Are there any other questions?
I have a few.
Okay, Ms. Thompson?
Um. As, you know, we had a pretty in-depth conversation the last open meeting, and sure everybody is aware of that. Uh, one of the things that we talked and great discussion was about transparency, and. We, um, denied the community their opportunity to allow their voices to be heard on this matter, and now. I feel like we're, we're denying the voices even further by not allowing, um. Board members to see who the bidders are and who the projects are being awarded to before they're being awarded. Which to me would also mean that, um, and one of the arguments was that we were doing what we were doing to ensure. Um, that everybody had the right to work on these, uh, wonderful projects in our district, and even including the mom and pop. Um, shops. Um, in our. Many different policies we in, are trying to implement tonight. There is great discussion of code of ethics and the role of the school board and our commitment to the comput- community. And to transparency and everything that we do. And, uh, you know, tonight, as I read in policy two oh nine, section D, uh, number four, it says that I will. It, D says, in meeting my responsibilities to my community, I will strive to uphold my responsibilities. And accountability to the taxpayers in my school district. Um, I don't feel that we're doing this by shutting out, um, our ability to see who bid on the projects and to discuss. Who the bidders are, as I mentioned in that meeting, uh, prior to this, the low bidder. Does not always equal the, uh, most qualified company to do the job. Um, I don't see this as being beneficial, um, I see this as more, um. To me, it's not transparent at all, to me, this is. Was against everything that we discussed in the last meeting, even against those who. Who had their voices heard for the decision that was made, and that decision was made so that we were speaking for all. Of our community members. This does not show that we are doing that, this shows that we are giving the control to one larger group. And I have nothing against Kraus Anderson, this is not personal, uh, to me, there's been a lot going on in our country. Uh, in the last couple of weeks, and I feel this is another way of, um, allowing. One big conglomeration to be in charge of everything that happens on the smaller level. Uh, this does not, um, provide transparency to me, I don't really have any questions, um, I just wanted to make that statement, um. And I guess, uh, that's really all I have, 'cause I don't, I don't have any specific questions to ask.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson, for the statement. Are there any other comments or concerns or statements that anybody else would like to make? Hearing or s- hearing or seeing none, uh, Ms. Ellison, are you all going to get ready to call the roll, or would you like to make a comment?
Oh, I was just wondering, um. Dr. Kazmercheck, you've said that we have, we've used this process before.
We use the, uh, NJPA for the gymnasium floor at South Campus as an example.
And it worked the same way?
Right, it, it, uh, it allows us to procure, um, through and, and meet all of our obligations as laid out by state statute.
And so. Do you feel that in the ways that we've done this in the past, that the work has been done? To satisfaction?
Yeah, from the, the projects that I'm aware of, it, it has been, yeah.
And a lot of other school districts. In Minnesota use the NG, NJPA.
That's correct.
Is that right?
Yep. It's a procurement model.
Right, so it's, it's not something that is. Out of the ordinary or unusual. For a school district to do.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I just wanted to clarify that, um. You know, it, it's hard for me to understand a, a lot of the. The way that, that finance works and the way that the, um. Uh, this process works, but I, I feel like if. The district. Has done this before in a way that's been satisfactory, and we are not alone in, in districts using this type of process, then, um. It seems to me that, uh. It, there's, it, it seems to me that this has worked for us and can continue to work for us, so that's, I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you for your statement, Ms. Ellison, are there any other comments, questions or statements?
I would just add one quick statement to that.
Ms. Thompson?
If we are speaking about state statute and what has been done in the past, I think we could all reflect. On these last couple of weeks, uh, of what state statute has allowed to happen before, and, um. Sometimes what has happened and is used by multiple organizations doesn't equal. That it is the just thing or the right thing to do, it just means it is what has always been done. And possibly there might be. Another way of making it happen, I'm not sure what the other instances were for why we used this process, if the. Maybe the projects were needed to be done faster, I, I don't, uh, really know, but it seems we've had plenty of time. To allow for the bidding process, and I just, um, I guess I'm. Just kind of wondering why we've decided, we, I mean, we, we heard bids, we've been hearing bids. At almost every meeting up until now, I just find it to be a curious timing.
If I could just, uh, interject one quick second, please, I'd ask board members to please wait to be recognized by the chair, um, as we move through this process. Thank you for your statement, uh, Ms. Thompson, Dr. Newmaster, did you have a comment?
I just. Thought I heard in the beginning of this, that this process is one that is state. Approved. Which would mean they ought to be meeting all the requirements. They haven't been eliminated yet, for equity, multiple people putting bids in, and they just have to meet the requirements. That, that's placed in it, so, I mean, I feel like it's maybe an expeditious way to do it for us. Um, as long as it meets all the. Checkboxes for equity and letting a variety of people put in a bid, I. Seems to me like it's a way to maybe save a little money if we're not paying extra, and we can still provide quality and. And speed and fairness, so I hope I'm understanding that correctly. They do need to, to check off all the boxes. For equity and fairness.
Dr. Kazmercheck, do you want to answer that question?
Yeah, as I stated before, it's a, it's a procurement method that's utilized and it's, it's state approved, and we meet our obligation as a school district to. Um, go through the bidding process through this manner, it's a common way of, uh, you know, joint powers agreements are a common way of, um. Of working, so. This is not something new, it's not something unusual, um. So yes, it's been around.
Alright, thank you very much, Dr. Kazmercheck, are there any other questions, comments or concerns?
Chair Mullin?
Yes?
Oh, I just.
Ms. Ellison?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to, uh, thank Dr. Newmaster for bringing that up, um. I, I, I think that that's a, a good point, that I hadn't considered. The fact that the state, um, has to approve it, and as a, as a historian, I, I fully understand. Um, that sometimes the way that things done are done is not always the right way, but I appreciated. Dr. Newmaster's, um, emphasis on, on that, so, um, so thank you.
Alright, are there any other comments, questions or concerns? Hearing or seeing none, I would ask the, this will require a roll call vote, would ask the clerk to please read the roll.
Thompson?
Nay.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, could you say that?
If we're, we're saying no, how, what's appropriate word we?
Nay, that would be the appropriate verb.
Sorry, thank you, nay.
Arcan?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison, aye, Mullin?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Okay, uh, with the majority of the members voting aye, uh, the motion passes, uh, we will now move into our next operational item. Um, E five, which is the accen- action of the fiscal year twenty twenty-one preliminary budget. Uh, Dr. Kazmercheck, I know Mr. Wall's not here, so I'll go, keep going to you.
Thank you, Chair Mullin, members of the board, and, um, Mr. Wazork is gonna lead us through this item, and I will certainly. Um. Add to that as needed, so Tom, do you want to take over and?
Yes, I will.
Tom, before you begin, what, what you're seeing tonight is essentially unchanged from the work-study meeting. Um, from a few weeks back, so. Um. So just to give you some context, that, that it's consistent with what is, what you've seen before.
That is correct, um, just to, uh, remind you that the, um, the board needs to, uh, pass a preliminary budget prior to June thirtieth. For the, uh, twenty twenty-one school year. Um, we did review this back in May. Um, and there has not been any changes to the, uh, to the preliminary budget since then. Um, I just might bring your, also your attention that the, um. Um, we are still anticipating that even though there might be a special session coming up, that we will not be. And we're not anticipating them making any changes to the twenty twen- or the twenty twenty-one school year at this point. Um, I think we have also factored in, um, conservatively what could happen beyond that. In FY twenty-two and beyond, um. Just, 'cause we don't, we just don't know any more than we do right now, so. I guess I would, uh, recommend that the board, uh, approve the. Um, fiscal year twenty-one preliminary budget, um, tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Wazork, uh, are there any, you know what, let's, uh, let's do this, let's. Um, there is a recommended action to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-one preliminary budget as presented, is there a motion to do so?
So moved. Oh, okay.
Miss, Doc, uh, there's been a motion by Dr. Arcan, and I'm assuming a second by Dr. Newmaster?
Yes.
Alright, is there any discussion regarding the budget? I know that this has been in our pack, I know that we've discussed it several times, I just want to make sure, because I know that with. Technology, it's a little bit hard to get off mute, uh, so I wanted to make sure, just to wait a couple more seconds if there's any questions. Um.
Chair Mullin?
Dr. Arcan?
So I, I think it's important that we understand moving forward that we made the best decision we could. With the data that we have, and I know that we tried to be very conservative. And just as if we could not anticipate, if we did not anticipate the pandemic that occurred. Um, we have to understand that as things occur, we'll adjust us as we move forward. And so we're putting our best attempt forward today, and then we can expect adjustments to. To come as things change in the economy and our funding streams and things like that.
May I add, may I add to that, um, so Dr. Arcan, I, I, I think that's a, um, that's accurate, I, I think that's a. The typical budgeting process is a preliminary budget is just that, and there are always adjustments, I think the adjustments. Mid-year this year might be more significant than what we're used to seeing. Um, so I would, um, I would echo that, that statement, so.
Dr. Arcan, Dr. Kazmercheck, thank you both for your comments. Did you have anything else, Dr. Kazmercheck? Are there any other questions regarding the presented budget? Hearing or seeing none, uh, this will require a roll call vote, but ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thompson?
Aye.
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison, aye, Mullin?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Okay, the budget has been approved, thank you very much, uh, we will now move into our next operational item. Uh, E six, which is the action on the, uh, purchase of property. Dr. Kazmercheck?
Alright, thank you, Chair Mullin, members of the board, so before you tonight are two more properties that, uh, again. Fit into the planning of, of the, uh, North Campus addition, the high, the new high school. And, um, you've received information about these properties, and, and again, as we've talked, uh, at other, other times, these are consistent with the, the plan. Um, and these, um, these two properties again are willing, willing sellers and are, um. Um, so we're presenting those to you tonight for approval. And, uh, Mr. Mullin, I'd be happy to read the recommendation if you prefer.
Uh, I've got it in front of me, but if you want, if you feel, uh, duty to do so, please go ahead and read it.
Okay, I'm just trying to lighten your load tonight, there's been a lot of agenda items.
All good?
Alright, so the recommended action is that we would move to approve the two purchase agreements for the properties described as PID number one one three. Zero two two four three zero zero two zero. And PID number one four three zero two two one two zero 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 eight. Located in the city of White Bear Lake, Ra- uh, county of Ramsey, state of Minnesota. The board authorizes the superintendent and the assistant superintendent for finance and operations to sign all documents as necessary to acquire said properties.
You've heard the recommended action, is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Chapman, is there a second?
I'll second.
A second by Ms. Thompson, is there any discussion regarding the recommended action? Hearing or seeing none, this will require a roll call vote, would ask the clerk to please, please call the roll.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcan?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison, aye, Mullin?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Alright, uh, the motion passes, thank you all very much, we will now move into our last operational item. Uh, E seven, I will take these, all the, these are several policies coming before us for our second reading, I will take them in one fell swoop. Um, so I will read all of them, uh, the second reading of school board policy four fifteen. Uh, mandated, uh, reporting of maltreatment of vulnerable adults. Policy five thirty-five, service animals on school property, policy six oh four, uh, instructional curriculum. Policy 604 instructional curriculum. Policy 624, online learning options. Policy 806, crisis management policy. Is there a motion to adopt these policies?
So moved.
Uh, there. By Ms. Thompson. For Newmaster, sorry, my earbuds just ran out of juice. Uh, there's been a motion and a second by Dr. Newmaster. Is that correct?
It was a tie, so however you call it is fine.
All right. So there's been a motion and a second. Any discussion regarding said policies?
Chair Mullen, I I have a would like to be recognized with regard to this.
Mr. Chapman.
Okay, Dr. Kazmierzak, you and I, as you know, had that conversation earlier today. This has to do with policy number 535, service animals on school property. And I I believe you're still looking into it. The question that I had for the rest of the board is the the policy as it stated talks about school property. And the discussion that occurred, as I recall, around the time of the policy committee meeting is that the term school property would be encompassing of school vehicles such as district-owned school buses and and vehicles and so forth, where the animals would be allowed on them. Uh, the question that I had has to do with uh, non-owned school vehicles such as those by first student or the other transportation firms vendors that we are utilizing. Um, if there if this policy needs to be changed to reflect uh, somehow that where it's formalized that those animals would be allowed on those vendor-owned vehicles as well.
Yeah. And so I did have a conversation with Mr. Lano, and he he was not able to participate tonight. He had technology difficulties, but we had. I I explained to him what your concern was and the we talked about policy, district policies applying to, you know, when we when we contract with vendors, the district policies apply. And then he he also was going to do some looking into different examples of what that he could have provided of where, you know, if a service animal did did something to another student on a on a vendor's bus, for example. Could that be problematic for us? And so he was he was actually going to have a couple scenarios for us tonight, but I but he wasn't able to participate. So he didn't. He didn't raise a huge alarm, but but he he appreciated the question, and he was going to do a little digging on that. So I think if you comfortable, I mean, moving ahead. Are you comfortable moving ahead, or would you prefer to just pull it off until you we can have further discussion about it?
I think we could move ahead on it. It's just something to probably keep in mind relative for the future relative to uh, having, you know, that policy perhaps reflect that going forward at some point. Maybe it doesn't need to, but just to keep it in mind for for further consideration.
Sounds good. And then I will still follow up with them. Follow up with you again. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Thank you, Dr. Kazmercheck. Are there any other questions regarding said policies?
Chair Mullen, could I be recognized?
Yes, Ms. Thompson.
Um, I have a couple. Policy 604 in regards to curriculum. The end where it gets into the legal references. If there's one that doesn't if we provide curriculum on it, but it's highlighted and it is Minnesota statute 120 point 234, child sexual abuse prevention education. I see that it's highlighted, but there's no mention of what sort of curriculum we provide in that manner.
Dr. Kazmierzak, can I answer that question?
Yep.
Thank you, Chair Mullen. Very good question. We actually asked the same question. That was a recommendation from MSBA. We did not see anything that connected to that within the policy. Jody did check into that, and it was just that there was some language change in MS in the at the legislative level, but there was nothing relevant in the policy. So it's a signal that something may come in the future, but there is nothing in the policy yet that is correlated with with that reference to the policy. So thank you for asking that question. We we delayed this one for that exact reason. And and we did not get an answer other than good question. So thanks for asking.
Thank you, Ms. Paul, for answering. I think it's a good a good thing that hopefully we will have something coming in the future. I think that's a great preventative measure we can hopefully someday include into our curriculum. I also had a question on a couple of questions that get into policy 806. I'll bear with me while I get down there. Um, 806 is the one for crisis management policy. My first question is in section two, B as in boy, look, 1A. Um, in there, it says in the second or the third sentence, lockdown causes classroom security to protect students and staff from a threat. And I was just wondering what classroom security is or equals if somebody could define that for me.
So that would be like the locking mechanism that room might have, for example, or shades in a window that a room might have, or location within a room. Go to just a general a general statement on what is used in a particular room for security.
Okay, thank you. I just wasn't sure if there was some something I wasn't sure that we had. And then the next one is more of, I think, maybe might have been missing language. And I gotta get there. It is in uh, the same area, but it is down in 3 uh, 3A. Um, in the top part there, it says that we are selecting a building emergency response team. And then down below, um, let me find my for the purpose of student safety and accountability to the extent possible, school emergency response team members will not have direct responsibility so that school be uh, building emergency response team members to reflect the first part.
Angela, could you tell me where you are? Which which item?
So I'm in I'm in the same section, which is what? Section two. And then number three, letter A. In the beginning, we called it BERT, Building Emergency Response Team. And then if you go down past the highlighted portion, that next sentence starts with for the purposes of student safety and accountability to the extent possible, school emergency response team members. I just wonder if that word school should be building.
Oh, okay.
It's just a I caught it. So I thought if if we're gonna make changes that maybe we could.
We, yeah.
It's a silly one, but I noticed it.
Ms. Thompson, are there you have any other questions?
I do. I'm sorry. I have two more.
We certainly could make that change. I want to be I'll just take a look to make sure it's consistent within within that particular item though. Okay.
Okay. My next one is just a question in section three, A, number two. We have created the crisis management policy. And then it looks like we tailor plans for each individual school building. I just wonder why we don't have an overall district policy that each building would follow. Is it my understanding that we will have like an maybe a a policy that they can follow, and then each building can tailor that so specific to their building needs?
That's right. So we do have it. We do have an overall plan that then gets tailored depending on the building. So.
Perfect.
Yeah, our buildings are very different how they operate, so the their planning has to reflect that. But there is an overarching file of district plan.
Great. Thank you. Uh, my last one comes because back when I took part in my group for I my brain is starting to not work anymore when we did. All right, I'm sorry. I'll just skip past that. It's actually in letter E, and it's the warning system. Um, so when I worked with my team on the, oh, I'm sorry, I cannot think of the word right now. My oh, we talked, we had a member in our team who was deaf. And they were a teacher in the district. They are no longer a teacher in the district. But one of their concerns, and then a couple of the other members on our team had also had the concern. I believe one of the parents had a child who was hard of hearing. And so I'm just wondering if there's a way we have, if we have thought about how our warning system warns people who are hard of hearing or maybe blind. One concern was if the student was in the bathroom or even the teacher was in the bathroom. When the warning is going off, there's no way for them to know. They wouldn't possibly see people, you know, reacting to the alarm going off. And I know other buildings and different companies and districts have like a light system where it, you know, a certain color, red would be warning. Um, or I I'm not sure how you would do it, but I just wonder if that's something we're thinking about as we're building and kind of doing the stuff in the schools. And I hadn't thought of it until I read this uh, in here tonight.
Yeah, I I if you have, if you can add anything, I'll 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 answer it. And then if you have anything else to add about any of the strobes that we so yeah, strobes are used in emergencies and in buildings. And I can't speak to exactly how wide how widely we're using that, but that is a technology that we are we're talking about. Including our security systems, including those types of things in our buildings. And so I don't know. Do you have anything to add there?
I can add something. This is Lisa Orin. Um, oftentimes, individuals who have those disabilities were working through their IEP teams to come up with plans on how that's a for all those different scenarios that you mentioned.
So it's done in planning with their IEP team.
Correct.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. I just want to also remind board members too that the policies are in the board packets for two months. And at any point, as you're working through your board packet or from the previous month, if you have questions or concern, I would encourage you to email them also to Dr. Kazmercheck too, so we can make sure that we're making getting the correct getting it good answers uh, for those questions. Sometimes when you're doing it here at night, it's a little bit harder to uh, come up with the answer right away when if you can, if you need to do a little bit of research, it can be done. So just wanted to make that statement. Appreciate everybody answering the the questions and and the follow-up. Are there any other questions regarding said policies? Hearing or seeing none, this will require a roll call vote. Would ask the clerk to please read the roll.
Thompson.
Aye.
Arcan.
Aye.
Chapman.
Aye.
Ellison, aye. Mullen.
Aye.
Newmaster.
Aye.
Thank you all. Those policies have been approved. Uh, we are now at the portion of our meeting is board forum. Uh, would open it up if there's any board members that have anything to report back on, or they would like to address anything. Uh, this would be a great time to do so. So is there anything under board forum, Dr. Newmaster?
I would just like to congratulate again all of our retirees in all the areas that people have worked for us for many, many years. But I'd like especially to mention someone who's kind of invisible sometimes to most of the world. But Jean Rasmussen has solved all kinds of snarly problems for us over the years with software and technology and had endless patience. And I know everybody kind of really knows her. She helped me a lot when I was a media specialist. But she has many expertise areas that have helped lots of us. So thank you, Jean. Best wishes and best wishes to everyone else for a safe summer.
Thank you, Dr. Newmaster. Are there anything else under board forum?
Chair Mullen, if I could.
Ms. Ellison.
I just wanted to commend leadership and all of the staff for a tremendous job the past couple of months. It's been so weird and difficult and challenging. And from what I have seen, leadership has worked really hard to make this happen. And with my parent had, I'd be prouder to be there. I also want to thank Sarah Paul for service through the district and wish her the best of luck.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Ellison. Is there anything else under board forum?
Chair Mullen. If I could be recognized?
Yes, sir.
And yeah, I just want to echo that as far as Sarah Paul. I have enjoyed working with her and look forward to hearing how things are going in in North Branch. Wish her the best there. And one other item that I want to mention too is, I don't know how many of the board members have noticed, but COVID-19 took one of our colleagues, the board chair of the St. Paul School District. I noticed today had passed away yesterday at the age of 31 from COVID-19. So clearly what we are doing to try to social distance and and all of the different measures to keep people safe is it just brings it back to light and and hits home that those measures are needed and have been needed, and and we're going to have to work through it all uh, to try and get back to some form of normalcy. But nonetheless, uh, I just feel very bad for for that for her family. I guess her name was Marnie Zhang Zhang and for the St. Paul community. So that's all I've got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Chair Zhang was a a great leader and a fierce advocate for education. Um, I've worked with her on many occasions, and thank you very much for your comments. Is there anybody else that has anything under board forum? I just want to end by saying that congratulations to all of our seniors. Kind of bittersweet for myself and I'm sure Mr. Chapman. But I want to just and I want to thank the staff for their work on putting together the graduation uh, virtual graduation. They did a tremendous job. I thought it was very well put together. And I just want to thank them for their work. And if there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Chair Mullen, I make the motion to adjourn.
Uh, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A se- we have a motion by Dr. Arcan, a second by Mr. Chapman. Uh, this will require a roll call vote. Would the clerk please read the roll?
Thompson.
Aye.
Arcan.
Aye.
Chapman.
Aye.
Ellison, aye. Mullen.
Aye.
Newmaster.
Aye.
And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much. Be safe.
Thank you. Go Bears. Go Bears.